Support comes from the Missouri Forest Products Association, saluting Earth Day on April 22nd with an ongoing commitment to help offset carbon emissions with sustainable harvesting of Missouri forests. Details at choosewood.com.
This is St. Louis on the Air from St. Louis Public Radio. I'm Alex Hoyer.
Obviously, they are held to the same ethics.
What I think a lot of people fail to realize is that school board members don't get paid.
The pandemic left many parents looking to assert control over their kids' schools.
Whether their children wear masks, control over whether all children wear masks.
If you've been following the news for the past three years, hearing "school board" might raise the image of controversy, or even chaos. A packed room of furious parents, school board members debating COVID precautions, or banning books, or teaching sex education, or installing gender-neutral bathrooms. But school boards are, at least in theory, supposed to be much more than just a platform for controversy. These elected bodies are critical to a school's functioning, but for the public, it can be hard to figure out what a functional school board is supposed to look like. So to talk about school boards, what they are, how they work, and what happens when they don't, we welcome to the studio Janet Tilly. She is the Senior Director of Research for the Missouri School Boards Association. Janet, welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me.
So give us the basics. What are the basic responsibilities a school board has?
Well, obviously, the school board is supposed to be, we talk about it in terms of fiduciary responsibilities, that they have a duty of loyalty, care, and trust for their students and for their community members. We do know from research that there are 10 basic principles that effective boards do, and that when they follow those particular principles, there is a positive correlation to increased student performance, student success. And so in our work at the Missouri School Boards Association, we center our work, our training, our support for school boards around those 10 principles.
You talked about school success. To what extent are school boards responsible for academic achievement?
Well, one of the very first things that we always share with our school board members in their training, and I think, I'm just going to do an aside really quickly, is that I think most people don't know that when someone is elected to the school board, that by mandate, by mandate and state law, they have to go through 18 and 1/2 hours of training.
I did not know that.
Yeah, and that has to happen within their first year of service. We encourage board, our new board members, to get that done within the first six months, just because there's so much to learn and so much to do. But within that particular training, we are mandated, again by law, to make sure that we train our school board members as to how they need to be monitoring what's going on in a school district as far as the academics are concerned, school law, ethics, personnel, sunshine law, you know, there's a plethora of many different aspects that they have to go through as far as their training is concerned.
Do you think most people who are elected to a school board are prepared to serve on the school board?
I don't know that you can be 100% prepared. It's like becoming a parent, you know? I just remember reading the books and thinking, oh, I can do this. And then the kid showed up and you're going, oh, my gosh, you know, what do I do with this eight pounds, you know, crying baby? I don't think that you can 100%, but I do know that there are school districts, and there are several within the St. Louis area, and I know Kansas City public does this, is that they will hold kind of some trainings or some information session for candidates to let them know just kind of what they're getting into and what the core responsibilities are.
And shouldn't that be something that people know in advance before they run for a school board, though?
Oh, absolutely, 100%. And we do have on our website, we have resources for school board candidates, all kinds of different documents and supporting material. And we're, you know, we answer questions. We try to help people the best that we can. So yes, they do need to be prepared, because it's much more than just, you know, running and saying, gee, I want to get, I'm going to use a story here of a school board member that I know who, when he first ran, it was about a kind of a single issue of he wanted a swimming pool in his daughter's high school. He did get elected, but he soon learned that there was so much more than just that one issue. And so, yes, you do need to be prepared, obviously.
Did he, was he successful in getting the school to get a swimming pool?
No, actually. And it sort of became a running joke even amongst the board members, because even he realized, he stepped back and he goes, oh, my gosh, you know, I was really kind of not bright about this, and that this is about so much more, and that our core responsibility is about the academic achievement of our students.
You also mentioned fiduciary responsibility.
Yes.
What does that look like in practice?
Well, and again, you know, we go in and we do some professional development and training for our boards and our superintendents, and we talk about the fiduciary of trust. And the fiduciary of trust means that I'm ethical, that what I say I'm going to do, I do, that I follow my board ethics policy. The fiduciary of care means, in fact, that I put the needs of the students and the school district above my own. And, you know, the other fiduciary responsibilities, obviously, are financial in making sure that, you know, they're monitoring the budget, monitoring the expenditures, and so forth.
When things go wrong, because unfortunately, things will go wrong.
They do.
To what extent are individual school board members responsible? If there is gross incompetence that should have been seen in some kind of oversight role?
If it's gross incompetence, you mean of a school district employee?
Right, right.
Or what's going on?
Yeah, like, let's say the superintendent is embezzling money, and there were clear warning signs that a school board should have seen. What kind of responsibility, legal responsibility, do school board members have?
Well, I'm, you know, I am not an attorney, and I try not to practice law without a license. However, you know, school boards and school districts are audited, and they are required to be audited. And the school board members have a responsibility for reviewing that particular audit and, you know, and looking and examining the findings. Still, you know, we know that there have been school boards and school districts within our state where exactly what you just described has happened. But a lot of the problem is, and I'm going to go back to my, you know, I'm a researcher, so I go back to my 10 research-based principles of effective governance. If, in fact, they had been implementing these school boards, implementing these practices, they would have uncovered those issues earlier.
So we want to hear from you, parents and invested community members. Do you like your school board? Do you wish it would be better, perhaps? What do you wish you better understood about how school boards work? You can give us a call at 314-382-8255. That's 314-382-talk. Or you can engage with us on Twitter, @STLOnAir. Now, let's talk a little bit more about the role of parents in the functioning of a school board. According to surveys conducted by A Red Circle, that's a nonprofit dedicated to addressing racial disparities in North St. Louis County, parents often lack information about their district's school boards. This week, education advocacy director Tamar Brown told our producer Emily Woodbury that she encourages parents to recognize their power by getting engaged in school board elections and forming relationships with school board members.
The relationship is key, and I think that with COVID and with some equitable situations we're having in education, those relationships are a bit strained. So we need our parents to get back involved, whether it's virtually or in person, to have conversations and really meet with our school board members, so they can know, they can know faces, they can know names, and they can know that we care for our children and we want the best for them. And we expect for those board members to do their best for our children. So I think communities taking back their power, realizing that they have elected these individuals into this space, and then we have to, we have to keep our eye on what's going on, our finger on the pulse, to ensure that our families, our most prized possessions are getting everything that they deserve.
And Tamar Brown also said that she recognizes that there's a historical context that has led some parents to disengage with their school district's leaders.
There have been situations with families where they have participated in a school district before and may have had an unfavorable experience. And so they carry that same unfavorable experience, and they almost pass it down to the next generation. Or they've had a run-in with someone at the school, and so they have a bad taste in their mouth, so to speak. But what's important for all of us to understand is that our school board has such an impact on our community and our schools directly, that the relationship is almost, it's not, it's impossible not to have a good relationship with them if we want a thriving community and a thriving school district. So the value in their relationship is something like, it's necessary. You have to have a relationship with your school district to understand their perspective, and most importantly, for them to understand parents' and community perspectives.
Again, that was Tamar Brown, education advocacy director at the nonprofit A Red Circle. Janet, what's your reaction to Tamar's points there?
She's 100% accurate on all of that. Absolutely, you know, obviously, you know, we had the pandemic, and that created all kinds of difficulties for, for school districts and for parents and for the community. But absolutely, you know, we often, and we are trying to help support our boards in how to effectively engage with their community members. And it's about two-way communication, not just one way, not just pushing out, here's what we're doing and those things, but really authentically engaging. And so that might be in the form of certain advisory committees. It could be in the form of, you know, surveys are okay, but it really needs to be more grassroots than that.
And these advisory boards are just ones that community members serve on at the pleasure of the school board?
Correct. You know, but they have a million other committees, you know? So there's a finance committee there are, you know, and especially with your strategic planning committees, parents, absolutely, their voice needs to be heard. The one thing, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask, when should parents go to school board members? Or should they start with a principal or perhaps a teacher?
It depends. And so if, you know, as a parent, I have an issue with my child, it needs to go first to the classroom teacher. We always encourage our, our community members, when you have a difficulty like that, is that you want the situation solved or remediated as quickly as possible. So you have to go to the person who can best do that and do it the fastest, and that's usually the classroom teacher. If the response from the classroom teacher is not what the parent needs, then it goes to the principal, and from the principal, you know, on up from there. It does not become a school board issue, and this is, again, by board policy, it doesn't rise to the level of the school board until it's gone through kind of all of those particular channels. And that's done for lots of reasons, because if, in fact, you know, a school board member gets involved in a particular situation, individual one, and it then would result in a hearing, then that school board member has to, you know, excuse him or herself from there. The other thing is that I always use the analogy of the gateway arch, that at the top of the arch, when you look out from that window and that perspective, that's the board's view. They have to stay at that 30,000-foot view, because, you know, from the top of the arch, you can see out to Forest Park, you can see, you know, the stadium, you can see, you know, the downtown area. They've got to have that wider lens. And the administrative piece, kind of the how of how to do things, belongs to usually the superintendent and his or her, you know, cabinet members, district officers, different administrators. And that the tactical piece is the boots on the ground, and that leadership belongs to our teachers.
Right, so that 30,000-foot view with the school board, or in the case of the arch, 630 feet?
Well, there you go. I didn't know the exact, you know? Sorry.
The arch is, fun fact, the arch is 630 feet high and 630 feet wide. It is the same distance as it is tall as it is wide.
See, you learn something every day.
See, this is just more about school boards, education in general.
There you go, absolutely.
So we have a caller, John from Ferguson is calling us. John, hello, you're on the air.
Yes, I was on the Ferguson-Floreson School Board for five years, and I also served on the school board for a Catholic school, Blessed Teresa Calcutta. But I think a lot of people fail to realize is that school board members don't get paid, that they put in 15 to 20 hours per week to do it right.
So really about community service, what, John, what motivated you to serve and be elected for the school board?
I was involved with the labor movement. We needed someone to represent the labor movement on the board. We figured that there, from looking at the board, we saw like an overwhelming representation from retired teachers, and so we wanted to have someone from labor there.
Are you proud of what you were able to do there?
I was, yes. I mean, sometimes I think I could have done more, but I had to make a living otherwise.
Right. John, thank you so much for calling. I really appreciate it. Janet, John was describing this kind of push-pull between wanting to do good things and doing good things, but he said it's unpaid. How do you, how do people who serve on a school board find that balance between spending 15 upwards hours a week on a school board and also being able to make a living?
Well, I think, pardon me, I think John is kind of generous in talking about the number of hours, because in truth, it can be upwards of, towards 30 hours a week if you're really going to be, as he said, to do it well and be prepared. Because it's not just going to a meeting every month, you have to read numerous documents, you have oftentimes work sessions, you know, other meetings, et cetera. So yes, no, he's right. In Missouri, our school board members are not paid. In other states, some of them are, and it is completely voluntary. And so we're grateful for these individuals who will put themselves out there to do it. But like you talked about at the very beginning, you know, what is it that people need to know before they throw their name in the hat? And this is one of them. The other is that I think he probably is more successful than maybe what he gave himself credit for, you know? Change, especially the kind of change that we need, will take time to get there. It doesn't happen in three years of service. It's going to be, we have to take it from the long view. So I don't know John, I've not met him, but my feeling is that, first of all, I want to tell him thank you for his service, and the other is that I don't think he should be so hard on himself.
I think John is good people. He's called in before, as I recall.
Has he? Okay, good.
All right, well, we need to take a quick break, but we'll be back shortly to continue this conversation. This is St. Louis on the Air on St. Louis Public Radio. Welcome back. I'm Alex Hoyer. Janet, one of the things that, you had talked about the fiduciary responsibility, not only in care, but there's also monetary responsibilities there, too. Are there other state laws that influence what a school board must do?
Yes, I cannot name them all from the top of my head, I'll be truthful, but...
Maybe just the highlights.
The highlights, okay. Well, first of all, I think, I'm just going to start with when school board elections are held. I'll do that one. And school board elections are held at municipal elections simply because back during the progressive era, it got changed, because they wanted to eliminate or do their best to eliminate political influence. Before that, school board members were all appointed, and usually appointed by, you know, city officials or town officials. So that's, you know, and we're seeing now kind of a movement of asking about whether or not those should be moved to November. The other, obviously, is, you know, there are some different regulations for St. Louis and for Kansas City, as far as your school boards are concerned. And, you know, in St. Louis, the mayor, if there's an opening, if someone resigns, and we've seen this, the mayor then appoints. That is not the case in other communities. In other communities, it's the school board themselves who then, you know, selects someone who is there. Obviously, they are held to the same ethics as all elected officials. School board members cannot be recalled, however, and in fact...
That surprises me.
Well, our legislators can't be recalled either. There are only a select, there's one select group, and I can't tell you the group right off the top of my head, that can't be recalled, but in the state of Missouri, like the governor can't, your senators, your representatives cannot be recalled.
So Linda had been on the line but wasn't able to stay on. I think her question was something about to what extent school boards have to do with setting the curriculum of the school. What's the answer to that?
Well, the answer to that is, is that, first of all, all school districts are kind of given the guidance that they are to teach to the Missouri learning standards. And so the Missouri learning standards are just global statements of what a child should be able to do. So for example, in third grade, one of the standards is that the child should be able to read a piece of nonfiction text and be able to tell you what the main idea is. How that is done is determined by the local district, and they are the ones then that write their local curriculum. There should be systems and processes in the district for how that curriculum is developed. However, the curriculum does have to be approved, and this is by law, has to be approved by the Board of Education.
Okay. Let's go back to the phones. We have Gloria calling us from St. Louis. Gloria, you're on St. Louis on the Air.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. It's really great to hear you all talking about school boards. It's just like really an important part of our democracy, and one of the things that I just wanted to just highlight and say that I'm really excited that our school board in St. Louis Public Schools is now back to an elected board. For a while, we had a board that was taken over by the state, and I wanted to see if you all could just address, like, what conditions, you know, need to be in place for something like that to happen again, and how can we really work hard to prevent that and make sure that we have elected officials by the people?
That's a great question, Gloria. Yeah, so Janet, we've, we have definitely heard about appointed school boards, and then a school board will earn a provisional accreditation. So why would the state take over a school board?
Well, if you go back, you know, when the St. Louis elected board lost its governance, it was done for a number of different reasons, and one of them was financial, the other was because of poor academics, and the other was about, you know, some leadership issues. Those have all changed, and I guess I feel very close to the St. Louis elected board because of, you know, five, six years ago, when you were having community forums about what kind of governance you wanted back, I was the one who came and talked to the community about why an elected board would be the better choice. And then the state board asked if Missouri School Boards Association, and I was the one doing it, is that I did an additional 50 to 60 hours of training with the elected board members to be able to help them with that transition back.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you for coming to do all that. That was a lot of effort.
Absolutely. But it, you know, I, you know, when Gloria's asking that particular question, one of the things that, that we have learned, I believe as a state, is that state control is probably not the best approach for helping struggling school districts, that the best approach is to focus on the children and the academics and the teaching.
So this is clearly a difficult time for school boards. I mentioned at the top of the show that it elicits a lot of controversy, whether we're talking about banning books or teaching sex education, installing gender-neutral bathrooms. And even under the best circumstances, running a school isn't easy. But we have a comment from Heather Fleming, founder and director of the Missouri Equity Education Partnership, and also a senior organizer at the African-American Policy Forum, and founder of In Purpose Educational Services. She says there are a number of school boards under attack right now, and as an example, she points to the Rockwood School District.
A couple of very conservative candidates were elected to the board, and one of the things that they have done since their tenure began was to connect to other conservative candidates and cancel three programs that were really successful to helping African-American students to succeed and to thrive. And so that's one of the reasons why we're organizing in these districts, because many of these candidates are running on anti-equity platforms and saying, you know, we want to get in there and just teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. But the problem with that is that you, research shows, we have to teach the whole student, and we can't teach the whole student if there are subjects that we can't address that might be within that student's experience, that they might have questions about, that they may have friends who are experiencing something and they need to know more about it. So we just have a lot of concerns around our school boards at this point.
And Heather also talked about what seems like a real increase in raucous school board meetings, as well as conflicts between schools and parents. These trends, she says, are the culmination of decades of advocacy from ultra-conservative movements, but it's also been affected by the pandemic, which left many parents looking to assert control over their kids' schools.
Control over, you know, whether their children wear masks, control over whether all children wear masks. And so we see this movement where masks, book bans, sex education, the various equity programs, DEI work in general, all of it is under attack at this moment. Another aspect that people don't consider is that a lot of the money that these candidates are receiving come from billionaires who have funded specific organizations that they like to paint as grassroots, but which are not grassroots. And so like our organization, we are truly grassroots. We are volunteer-based. It is parents, former educators, just all kinds of people that are in the groups saying, what can I do? How can I help? Our biggest concern is that in districts such as Rockwood, what they continue to find is that the more these issues and the more contentious these issues are, the harder it is to retain quality staff members, as well as to hire others, to even source, to hire teachers, administrators, et cetera. So there, we're going to be facing teacher shortages, and when we face teacher shortages, we definitely are going to end up seeing that impacting student achievement.
That was Heather Fleming, founder and director of the Missouri Equity Education Partnership, who spoke to our producer Emily Woodbury. Janet, does Heather make a good case here?
Yes, actually. And one of the things, too, is that when I look at what was and has been going on in Rockwood, and I have worked with that particular board as well, is that there was kind of a systems problem. They didn't have a good process for doing what is called program evaluation, which is what a board is supposed to do. And so I know that Dr. Kane and his staff and the board are working to make big changes with that, because those particular programs that she mentions that were cut should have been a part of a larger program evaluation process. And, you know, we have discussed that with the board. So the other, you know, one of the other guiding principles that we always go back to about what boards are supposed to do is that they have... to about what boards are supposed to do is that they have to monitor progress. And the key piece of monitoring progress, especially in a district as large as Rockwood, is to make sure that you have a systematic process for evaluating and looking at the effectiveness of your key programs. And that needs to happen, and, you know, we have several districts in the state of Missouri who do that very well. Park Hill in Kansas City does it very well. Raymore Peculiar does it very well. And so I think if having that particular kind of process helps to mitigate these situations that she's discussing. The others, you know, there are, you know, we do, we have some culture wars going on, and those will come into our school board meetings.
Well, I wanted to ask about that, like, you have some people running for school board, as Heather talked about, who are generally very ultra-conservative and are sometimes, their values are antithetical to the very existence of public education, and sometimes these people are getting elected to school boards. How do you deal with people on a school board who want to dismantle public education?
Well, you know, there are these polarities. And so one of the things that we have come back to is to talk about what we call the moral imperative, you know, why are you here? You are here to make sure that these kids are taken care of, each child, each child receives the education and support that he or she needs. And while you come at it from different viewpoints, you have to come back to center. Getting to that point is going to take some negotiation and some work in being able to work with each other. But you have to find, what do you have in common? What's the thing that you hold on to in the center? And so that's where you have to go to.
Jane is on the line from South City. Jane, go ahead.
Boy, this is an excellent, excellent program. I never knew all this. But anyway, when, oh my gosh, gives me goosebumps. Thank you.
What is your question, Jane?
Yeah, my question is, how do I, as an older person with no children in school anymore, of course, I try to be very conscientious voting for school board members. And I live here in the city, and I know things have gotten better, and we have a new superintendent, which I'm looking forward to. But how do I know that it's, I mean, we get maybe a couple of sentences.
Right, yeah. Jane, we have your question, and that's something else. I mean, I live in Swansea, Illinois, in the metro east, and the Bellevue News Democrat is right there, but cuts to newspapers, cuts to media coverage in general. It is tough to find out what a school board is doing or to have information about candidates. Janet, to Jane's question, what can people do to find out information?
Well, first of all, you know, if there are forums within your community, it's important to go to those. I know that, you know, the League of Women Voters just had a wonderful forum in my community last night. Most of them, you can join by Zoom if you can't go in person. Those are oftentimes limited, however, because there's only certain questions. So the other thing is that, as an individual, because you're a voter, I would reach out to those specific candidates, especially those that you feel where you need better clarification of what their viewpoints are and what their thinking is, because that's obviously critical and important.
Right. Jane, thank you for your question, and Janet Tilley, thank you for being here today as well.
Absolutely.
Janet Tilley is the Senior Director of Research for the Missouri School Boards Association, and we've been talking about the role of school boards in this moment, when particularly there seems to be so much controversy around them. Janet, thanks again.
You're welcome.
This episode was produced by Emily Woodbury.
Audio engineering and podcast design by Erin Dorr. Our production intern is Avery Rogers. Alex Hoyer is our executive producer.
St. Louis On the Air is a production of St. Louis Public Radio. Understanding starts here.
Our podcast proudly supports St. Louis artists by using music from Life Creative Group. Do you find yourself regularly listening to episodes of St. Louis On the Air? Suggest us to a friend you think might enjoy our conversations. And leave us a review and rating on Apple Podcasts on the App Store. It's the simplest way to help people discover our show. Thanks.
St. Louis Public Radio is a member-supported service of the University of Missouri-St. Louis.
Support comes from the Missouri Forest Products Association, saluting Earth Day on April 22nd with an ongoing commitment to help offset carbon emissions with sustainable harvesting of Missouri forests. Details at choosewood.com.